Good morning.
Good morning. At this time, we will, uh, I will bring the DeSoto County School Board to order. And Ms. Michelle Henley will send the letter for the pledge. Let's stand, Annie.
(Inaudible).
At this time, we will need to approve the agenda. Your recommendation, sir.
Madam Board, I recommend the board to approve the agendas.
I have a recommendation. I need a motion.
I make the motion for approval of the agenda.
I need a second, please.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passed. Well, I guess you're ready.
I'm ready. Ready to go. We've got a good crowd. Uh, before we get started with that, I've got three items, uh, for our board. We have TSI and ATS I information in your board packet. Uh, we have a, I would like the board to consider a personnel performance matter in executive session. And we have early graduation. We have, uh, light system.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. All right, our first item today, this upcoming Wednesday is Administrative Professionals Day. And I know that our board members and I would like to recognize our executive assistant to the board, the special officer, also our board work. And Ms. Cross, we really do appreciate all that you do for the sake of this. Thank you. Great. Thank you, Ms. Cross. We have got, uh, several, uh, award-winning schools that we want to recognize. The last two board meetings, we've been recognizing elementary, uh, schools, uh, for their accomplishments on last year's state test, uh, by the prep's organizations. Uh, today, we have got secondary schools that are here, uh, to be recognized. Uh, first of all, we have high schools, uh, who have won awards. I'll call out the school and the principal if you come forward, uh, to receive their certificate. For ELA growth, Hernando High School, Principal Dwayne Case. For Algebra I achievements, Lake former high school, Principal John Sartan. For Algebra I achievements, South Haven High School, Principal Adam Sykes. Now for middle schools, for, uh, math growth and for eighth grade math achievement, Center Hill Middle School, Principal Larry Hood. For math growth and seventh grade math achievement, Hernando Middle School, Principal Dr. Jerry Loeb. For math growth and seventh grade math achievement, Lewisburg Middle School, Principal Brad Meadows. For eighth grade ELA achievement and eighth grade math achievement, Olive Branch Middle School, Kayla Pill. Then for seventh grade math achievement, seventh grade ELA achievement and eighth grade ELA achievement, Soto Central Middle School, Principal Brian Wiggins. Principals that received awards, if you have to come up, we'll get a group photo. Right. Congratulations. And now we have state champions that we would like to recognize. Uh, to start with today, we have individual state champions. In certain sports, uh, we have students that will win an individual award. We're fortunate in DeSoto County to be able to recognize these student athletes. Uh, Mr. Pete Williams, Assistant Superintendent, come forward. We recognize these students.
I think by far my favorite part of any board meeting is getting to recognize, uh, students, uh, who have excelled. And that's whether that's academic distinction or extracurricular excellence. Um, there's a point of pride in knowing how much hard work and sacrifice that these students have put into getting to this point and receiving this honor. So I will call the students out by name. If you'll come to the front just for us and we'll give you your award, we'll ask you to stand here and we'll get your principals and coaches up at the end so we can get a picture. All right, I'll start with Hannah Harris. She's at Lake former high school, 132 pound weight class, powerlifting individual state champion. Our second one is Hillary May. She's at Lewisburg High School, 97 pound weight class, powerlifting individual state champion.
I'd like for their coach and principal to please come forward and get a group photo.
Okay. Next is Landon Woodall, Hernando High.
We got, we got two different schools. Okay, let's get one school at a time on the photo. Yeah, one they wanted photos. So let's see, Lewisburg, uh, who went first? Okay, Lake Corner first, it's your Lake Corner first. And then Lewisburg, uh, Lewisburg next. Right. Great job. Congratulations. I have Lewisburg High. Congratulations.
Next is Landon Woodall, Hernando High, 114 pound weight class, powerlifting individual state champion. Moving to individual wrestling state champion, I've got Logan Bradley, Lewisburg High School, 126 pound individual wrestling state champion. Finally, we got Nate Taylor, Center Hill High School, uh, 195 pound wrestling state champion.
Congratulations.
All right, next we'll ask Mr. John Sartan to come up. I was talking to one of his coaches before the board meeting and he said I could just pencil him in every year around this time. He was a powerlifting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank y'all so much for just allowing us to recognize the hard work of our coaches and these athletes for this past year. Our powerlifting team for the second straight year has won the 5A state championship in our, the boys division. We have three outstanding coaches, Coach Crawford, Coach DeGraw, and Sergeant Major Herman. And then we have nine outstanding young men that we would like to recognize today. And at this time, we'll have Coach Crawford come up and introduce our powerlifting team. Thank you for having us. Thank you for having us. At this time, we're going to recognize, uh, the boys, uh, 114 pound weight class, Zane Rose. And 123 pound weight class, Randy Satten. And 148 pound weight class, Elijah Logan. And 165 pound weight class, Blaze Fisher. And 181 pound weight class, this young man not only won an individual state championship, but he was also a Super 12. What Super 12 is, he's the strongest 181 pound young man in the state of Mississippi. And 198 pound weight class, Keywon Williams. Our next student athlete, this young man has been a part of the program for four straight years. He's our team captain. He's been a part of four straight regional championships, three North Ave championships, one North Ave runner-up, one state runner-up, and two state championships, Blake Rude. And the 242 pound weight class, Josh Mabine. And then the super heavyweights, Tyler Wallace.
We can get a group photo. Parents, if you want to come up and take photos also, feel free to do that.
Get in tight, guys. Get in tight. Move in front of the photo.
All right, we'll now move on, uh, from our athletic state champions to some of our academic champions. We have got, uh, today with us, uh, valedictorians from each school, salutatorians from each school, our star teacher and our star student. And just to remind everyone about the star, uh, teacher and student, how that works, uh, the star student is named by the Mississippi Economic Council each year, uh, they're recognized by them. That is the student on campus who has the highest ACT score, uh, the senior on campus. And then if, uh, you reach a 35, uh, no matter how many 35s are on campus, all of those are star students. So if you see multiple winners, you'll know that, uh, they had 35s or higher. Also, the star teacher is someone that they have picked as an educator, uh, maybe that they're, it's with them here at the school now, maybe that they've had in the past. They get to pick an educator that made a big influence on them and helped them get to where, uh, they are today. So we invited all the star teachers here today too. So we'll recognize those from each of our eight high schools at this time. Uh, we'll start with Center Hill High School, uh, Principal Jason Will. We'll come forward to introduce there.
Thank you, school board, for recognizing these, uh, outstanding students. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Center Hill High School, valedictorian, Alex Chin. And Center Hill High School, salutatorian, Emma Kate Taylor. We have two star students. First one is Kaylee Nobeside. Her star, her star teacher was unable to be here, that is Ms. Toni Coleman. Our next star student is Ashlyn Peacock. And her star teacher is Ms. Judy Terry.
Get a group photo. Feel free to come up and get photos. Congratulations. Next up, we have the Soto Central High School, Principal Shane James.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for, uh, having us. It's my honor to, uh, introduce these five students from the Soto Central. Starting with our valedictorian, Ms. Avery Stratton. Our salutatorian is Ms. Amanata Bopp. Our star student this year is Ms. Adriana Cantrell. She chose for our, our star teacher this year, Ms. Carol Houston.
Group photo. Congratulations. Next up, we have Hernando High School, Principal Dwayne Case.
My next board member. This time, we'd like to, uh, recognize our valedictorian, Ms. Alexandra Trigg. Our salutatorian for this year is Ms. Rose Happer. Our star student for this year, and I mentioned this, uh, last week, I think when we were here, uh, is Alexandra Trigg, and she made a 36 on her ACT. The star teacher she chose is Tanya Flight.
Group size. Congratulations. Next up, we have Horn Lake High School, Principal Nick Tungit.
All right, good morning, and thank you all for having us today. We'll start with our valedictorian, is Ms. Mia McKennie. Our salutatorian is Ms. Sydney Warren. Our star student this year is also Ms. Mia McKennie. And Mia chose Mr. Michael Kenny as her star teacher.
Group photo. Congratulations. Next up, we have Lake former high school, Principal John Sartan.
Thank y'all for allowing us to recognize these students here today. Our valedictorian is Mr. Marcellus Pottle. Our salutatorian is Ms. Jeslyn Jones. Our star student is Mr. Ryder Burns. And Ryder has selected as his star teacher, Mr. Cornell Phillips.
Congratulations. Lewisburg High School, Principal Chris Perkins.
Good morning. Thank you again for having us here today to honor these students. For Lewisburg High School, our valedictorian this year is Ms. Mason Hales. The salutatorian for, uh, Lewisburg High School is Olivia Cashin. We had two star students this year. The first is Hayes Heron. The star teacher that he chose is Ms. Tracy Hunter. She couldn't be with us today. She's out of season today.
Our second.
Our second star student is Mr. Samuel Overstreet. Sam chose Ms. Maggie Dennis as his star teacher.
Congratulations. Next up, we have Olive Branch High School, Principal Jacob Stripling. Board members, good to have you today. The valedictorian for Olive Branch High School this year is Ms. Madeline Holmes.
The salutatorian from Branch High School, Mr. Joshua Howard. Our star student this year is Mr. Trey Smith. And Trey chose as his star teacher, Ms. Mandy Shackleford.
Congratulations. And we have South Haven High School, Principal Adam Sykes.
Board members, thank you for letting us come today and recognize these students. One quick thing to say before, uh, I present South Haven High School, um, as an opportunity just to be in education for a long time and get to see, been around our district in multiple schools, uh, in multiple, I guess, roles. And I got to be assistant principal of Horn Lake Middle School when Mia McKennie, Horn Lake High School's, uh, valedictorian came through. I remember at a young age, in seventh, sixth or seventh grade, we were talking about, uh, her wanting to be valedictorian, and that was her dream and aspiration. And then we actually talked about, I said, I want you to be the first woman president also, so. South Haven High School's valedictorian is Ms. Madison Washington. Southern High School's soliditarian, soliditarian is Andrew Wynn. Southern High School's star student is also Andrew Wynn. Andrew picked Ms. Julie Kastrechik as his star teacher this year.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Want to thank all the parents who are in attendance today for your support of Southern County schools. I want to thank our administrators and teachers who are here to help our students get to this point. I want to congratulate our students again. Congratulations for the state championships and all the academic awards, and we were just so glad to be able to honor you all today. To our seniors, we hope that you enjoy these last few weeks, and we look forward to seeing you at graduation coming up in about four weeks. And at this time, we are about to start with the business of the board meeting. You are welcome to attend, but if you would like to leave, now would be a good time. If you might want to do that. I hope you have a great day. And that concludes our session.
That was a great session, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Of course you did.
When you get to recognize, it makes a job of life.
It does. Makes us smile. Stay on your Facebook while I go. Attorney's report. Your sound report today. Oh, that's awesome. Okay, this time we need to approve our minutes for March 23, 2023, board meeting. I need this in a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Ayes carried. Motion passed. Consent agenda. Items, items A through EEE. And I wasn't laughing. I need your recommendation, sir.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
I have a recommendation. I need a motion.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I need a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Ayes carried. The motion passed. New business, Architectural Services Allen and Hoshel TLLC, partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary. Mr. Williams.
We're seeking permission from the board to enter a contractual agreement with Allen and Hoshel for Horn Lake Elementary School's partial HVAC replacement project.
Your recommendation, sir.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve this Architectural Services Allen and Hoshel with partial HVAC replacement.
I have a recommendation. I need a motion.
Make that motion.
I need a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Ayes have it. The motion carried. Permission to advertise for bids, partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary School, Mr. Williams.
Yes, ma'am. We're seeking permission from the board to advertise for bids on the partial HVAC replacement project at Horn Lake Elementary School.
Your recommendation, sir.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve advertising for bids for the partial HVAC replacement at Horn Lake Elementary School.
I have a recommendation. I need this in a motion. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Ayes have it. Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Personnel, Mr. Alexander.
Pages 1 through 3 are personnel packet of recommendations. Pages 4 and 5 are personnel changes. Page 6, I've been open for myself, add two additional teaching units to the juvenile detention center for next school year. Pages 7 and 8, is request from Miss Carol Smith, our director of elementary education, on teachers that will work to create school improvement for the fifth grade science. They'll work June the 9th through 23, end on June the 29th, for a total of about 42 hours, $30 per hour. Page 19 is request from Carol Smith, teachers who will work as on a summer committee at South Haven Elementary School, beginning 6/19 and ending 6/22, for a total of 28 hours, $30 per hour. Pages 10 and 11 are requests for additional pay from the samples. Executive Director of Academic Education on teachers who will work at the Teacher Academy, beginning July 11 and ending July 21, for a total of 20 hours and $30 an hour. And pages 12 through 13 is request for additional pay from Carol Smith, on teachers who will work on pacing guides to district, beginning June the 5th and ending June the 8th, for a total of 16 hours and $30 an hour.
Your recommendation, sir.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve personnel's presentation.
I have a recommendation. I need this in a motion.
Make that motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Ayes have it. The motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Finley.
Madam Attorney, we have students with discipline announced to address executive session.
Thank you. I need a motion for consideration of closed session to determine whether the board should have entry executive session for the following matters. Student matters regarding early graduation, student discipline, and personnel performance matter. I need a motion.
I make the motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carried. Mr. Chase will come back and inform you whether we say the executive session. We are.